The Leominster City Council meeting is funded in part by DeCarulous Insurance Agency at www.decarolousinsuranceagency.com.
Thank you, Mr. President. Good evening. This is a public hearing of the Legal Affairs Committee. My name is Peter Angelini, Chairman of the Committee. I'm joined by the other two members of Legal Affairs, Counselor Mark Badanza and the third member and clerk, Counselor Pauline Cormier. This is Petition 3922. Caitlin Huffman, City Clerk, requests a new section of the City of Leominster Revised Ordinances, Chapter One, Section 1.12, regarding an electioneering policy for the City of Leominster. Mr. President, let me read the ordinance. City of Leominster, in the year 2022, in ordinance, be it ordained by the City Council of the City of Leominster as follows. Amending Chapter One by inserting a new section, 1.12, of the Revised Ordinances entitled "Electioneering Policy." No poster, card, handbill, placard, picture, or circular intended to influence the action of a voter, other than those expressly authorized by General Law, Chapter 54, Section 65, shall be posted, exhibited, circulated, or distributed in the city clerk's office, the city's municipal building at 25 West Street, or within 150 feet of the municipal building entrance doors accessible to the public during each designated absentee or early voting period of time that permits the casting of in-person votes. This is relatively straightforward. It was submitted, obviously, by a learned clerk. This is something that we have to deal with each election cycle. In the past, we've dealt with each election cycle, and this would make it an ordinance, and it's something that would be in place until either the legislature decided to amend or change these particular statutes. So I would ask if members of my -- Counselor Badanza, if you'd like to comment at all on this?
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As you indicated, the city clerk just wants to formalize or sort of institutionalize this provision so that we pass something similar for per-election in the past. This would extend to all elections that are early voting elections where there's in-person voting. It's consistent with the state policy and the city policy for other elections, and it seems logical. So I'd be in favor of it.
Counselor Cormier?
I agree. I'd be in favor of it as well. It's just a matter of time.
Any members of the council like to weigh in on this? Mr. President?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. I just want to thank the city clerk for putting this forward so that we, you know, have something very clear. I just have one item that comes to mind, and I'm just wondering if maybe we should add a sentence at the end that said the same -- that would basically say the same would apply to any other designated voting location or locations. I know that, as of now, we do all of this here at City Hall, but it could change. You never know. And a simple sentence would save this whole process from having to happen again in the future. Should we be required to bring early voting back out into the wards, or we ever decide as a city that they're going to be held elsewhere, one additional sentence would cover us for any other locations that we may need to designate in the future.
Mr. President, could we hear from the petitioner on that change?
I'm fine with that.
All right. And, Mr. President, if you'd be so kind, could you repeat that sentence so I can add it to my ...
Absolutely. And if you want, during the meeting, you can make a motion to, you know, to amend it, because I can't.
Could I humbly suggest an easier way to do it?
Sure.
After the words, misspoke building door, accessible to the public, during -- put a comma after the word "public" in any other designated early voting -- just any other designated voting place. Or applicable voting place during each designated absentee early voting. Does that make sense?
Yeah, that's fine. Works for me. Other than that, Mr. Chairman, I'm all set.
All right. Again, anyone else in the council like to comment on this? Is there anyone in the public that would like to speak in favor or in opposition to Petition 39-22? For the second time, is there anyone in the public that would like to speak in favor of or in opposition to Petition 39-22? And for the third and final time, is there anyone in attendance this evening that would like to speak in favor of or in opposition to Petition 39-22? Seeing none, Mr. President, I'll declare the public hearing closed.
Okay. Thank you very much. And we can move right into -- it's 6:46, so we can move right into the 6:45 hearing.
Good. 6:46. This will be a public hearing of the Legal Affairs Committee on Petition 24-22. Elizabeth Wood, on behalf of the Planning Board, requests to amend the zoning ordinance pertaining to performance guarantees for site plans, R.E., to ensure that all conditions of approval issued by the Planning Board for site plan are completed. As we heard, let's see. Okay. In the year 2022, in ordinance, be it ordained by the City Council of the City of Leominster as follows. Article 11 of the zoning ordinance entitled "Site Plan Approval" is hereby amended by adding the following subsections to Section 22.59. Application, 59.1, Performance Guarantee. In accordance with Mass. General Law, Chapter 44, Section 53G and a half, the Planning Board may require that the applicant for site plan to file with the board, as a condition of approval, a bond or other such surety acceptable, in form and amount to the Planning Board. This surety is to cover cost of construction, such as driveways, utilities, landscaping, and other site improvements, but not limited to erosion control measures and off-site environmental impacts, which left incomplete or improperly constructed present a public health and safety hazard or nuisance. Further, performance agreement between the applicant and the city will specify the manner in which the on- or off-site improvements will be completed in the specific manner and timeframe, a maximum of one year, in which the work will be completed and the surety will be released. Said bond will be held by the city treasurer in an interest-bearing account. The performance guarantee shall be collected at the time a certificate of occupancy is requested and prior to the issuance of a certificate of occupancy. 59.1.1, Release of Performance Guarantee. Upon completion of all or a portion of the improvements required by a performance agreement entered under Section 22-59.1 of this bylaw, the applicant may request either partial or full release of his or her bond, bond or other such surety as has been posted by the applicant pursuant to Section 29-59.1, by sending a statement of completion and request for release by -- to the Planning Board, to the city clerk, and date stamped by the city clerk. It shall then be forwarded to the Planning Board for determination. If the Planning Board determines that said construction has been completed fully or partially, it shall release fully or partially the interest of the city in such bond or other surety and return it to the person who furnished it. 59.1.2, Refusal of Release. If the Planning Board determines that said site improvements have not been either fully or adequately completed, it shall specify in a notice sent by registered mail to the applicant and to the city clerk, the details wherein said site improvements fail to comply with the requirements of these zoning bylaws. 59.1.3, Exercise of Performance Guarantee. If the site plan is not completed to the satisfaction of the Planning Board within the specified timeframe designated by the Board, the Board has the authority to exercise the surety, bond, or passbook account in order to complete the required improvements as designated in Site Plan Approval. Mr. President, I also have a letter dated March 9, 2022, from Planning and Development Director, Elizabeth Wood. It's regarding Petition 24-22 to the City Council for Zoning Amendment Pertaining to Performance Guarantees for Site Plans. It reads as follows. Attention, City Council. At a previous City Council meeting, the Council requested that I contact KP Law and have them put the previous draft into ordinance form. I did so and provided this copy to the Planning Board for a decision. On 3/7/22, the Planning Board reviewed the draft from KP Law in ordinance form and voted six to zero to close the public hearing. Hearing for Petition 24-22 pertaining to performance guarantees for site plans with the following amendment. Add a provision to the performance guarantee shall be collected at the time a certificate of occupancy is requested and prior to the issuance of a certificate of occupancy. I have provided the updated draft of the proposed zoning amendment, including the Planning Board's requested change for your consideration. Please review the draft amendment and consider making an amendment to the zoning. Regards, Elizabeth Wood, AICP Planning and Development Director. This is pretty straightforward as well. I know in the past, this council has experienced some problems with developers who haven't quite completed the site, and with some consternation, we worked our way through it and had the, in some cases, another developer step forward to remedy the situation. But some of these things can take quite some time and certainly frustrate constituents who are dealing with it. So I'd be in favor of this certainly, and I would like to go to other members of my committee and hear what they have to say. Counselor Badanza?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As I mentioned, when this was introduced, I'm very pleased by the original intent of this and pleased also to see it now in an ordinance form. I have the following observations about the ordinance. First of all, any references to bylaw needs to be stricken and replaced with the word "ordinance," because, of course, we're not a town. And I had a couple other edits as well, sort of minor edits. But I'm interested about the amendment that the Planning Board made to Counselor O'Reilly's proposed ordinance. And I think I understand the basis for it, but it seems like, in some instances, requesting this bond at the time a certificate of occupancy is requested might be a little late in the game. And I'm thinking maybe the words "collected at" or "before" the time the certificate of occupancy is requested might be better, and maybe that's something the planning director who's here could address tonight. And then I had a couple other minor edits. There was, in 59.1, the second to the next line, where it says "guarantee shall be collected," I would just add the words "by the city" to make it clear that they're paying it to us. 59.1.1, fourth line down, in fact, Mr. Chairman, you kind of hesitated this because it's not appropriate grammar, but there's an extra word "by" near the end of that line that doesn't need to be there. And then in that same section, in the last line, "bond or other security and return it to the person or entity," add the words after "person or entity" who furnished it, because it may not necessarily be a natural person that posted the bond. Those are really all my comments.
Counselor Badanza? Could I trouble you to go back? I had the last one, but I missed the first couple. I want to correct them so that you can ...
All right. So first of all, I think bylaw appears ...
That I have.
Okay.
I have it twice.
All right. The next proposal I would have is be 59.1, next to the last line, "guarantee shall be collected at or before the time a certificate of occupancy is requested."
59.1?
Actually, that's two changes. Guarantee shall be collected "by the city"
Yeah.
"at the time, at or before the time a certificate of occupancy is requested."
"at or before." Okay.
And then 59.1.1, fourth line, fourth word from the end of that line, the word "by" needs to be deleted. And then the last line of that section, where we're talking about the return of the surety, and return it to the person or entity who furnished it.
Return to the -- I'm looking for that. Right to the bottom?
Very last line.
All right.
Bond or other security and return it to the person or entity who furnished it.
Return. Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
Counselor Pauline Cormier?
I have no problem with any of the changes, and I'm actually, I'd be very happy to approve this. I think we're gonna fill in some serious gaps that we've had for a long time.
All right. I know I'm a little bit out of order here, but may I -- would the council object to me asking Ms. Wood to speak in favor for the petition before I go to the members of the council? All right. Hearing, no objection. Our Planning and Development Director? Good evening, Ms. Wood. The floor is yours.
Good evening. I don't object to any of the changes that council has proposed, except I want to say we did make that change because there needs to be a time period that the performance guarantee is initiated and collected. And it seems like a good time to collect it at the time that the entity or person is seeking a certificate of occupancy. That's because internally, administratively, there are only a few triggers that would trigger us to come look at the site. One would be when the decision is made by the Planning Board, but that's too early because there's no opportunity for the Planning Board, I mean, there's no opportunity for the developer to do the improvements on his or her own. The second would be the building permit phase. That's when we're triggered to draw attention to the property. But that's also too early, because when the building permit is issued, that's when the property owner or the entity is given permission to just break ground and start working on the site. So the in-between period would be building permit phase, and then you get to the certificate of occupancy phase. And then, at that point, the building commissioner would need to notify the Planning and Development Department that it's time to do an inspection and see if all the improvements were made. And then we have it hanging over the developer or the entity's head that they can't get that C of O until they either give us a performance bond or the work is completed.
If I may, I'm just gonna stop you right there. It is seven o'clock, so I'm required to start the meeting, and then we'll come right back. Will you all please stand and join me for a salute to the flag?
Let the nations do the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. I'd like to call the meeting of the Leominster City Council for March 14, 2022, to order, and I will take a roll call of counselors in attendance, beginning with Counselor Badanza.
Present.
Counselor Pauline Cormier.
Present.
Counselor Arndt.
Present.
Counselor Angelini.
Present.
Counselor Brady.
Here.
Counselor Shalfo Zephyr.
Present.
Counselor Deacon.
Present.
Counselor Freya.
Present.
And I will be, I am present. Madam Vice President, do you have any records to approve this evening?
I do, Mr. President. I have, in fact, after the last meeting, I asked the city clerk, and she was very kind enough to do, since there were some issues that were brought up. And essentially, what she did is a transcript of the entire hearing from February 14, 2022. So it's a full transcript. You can see it. It's much more in-depth than our regular meeting, our regular minutes are, and I find them to be in good order, Mr. President. And I ask that the minutes of the meeting on February 14, 2022 be placed on file.
Okay. There's no objections, those minutes will be placed on file. Counselor Shalfo Zephyr?
Yeah, thank you very much. You know, I did have one comment that I just wanted to double-check again, because I did send some language I didn't see incorporated into, on page three. And what I want to do is, it wasn't about the hearing with Mr. Villas, which I know was taken verbatim from, but this was with the fire chief. And there's a couple of things here I just wanted to double-check. I'll check the video myself, just to make sure that it's accurate. So my concerns are on page three, if we can just hold off on those, I guess.
All right. Are there any other questions? Counselor Frida?
I have a few comments to make. I'm gonna need a little bit of time. So I don't know if you want to hold this off for a few minutes until the hearing is complete, so we don't have people waiting?
We can do that, yeah. We can, we can, if it's okay, we'll take a recess. If I can have a motion for recess, Counselor Badanza, Counselor Arndt, all those in favor of recess. Those opposed, by a vote of nine to zero, we stand in recess. Mr. Chairman of Legal Affairs, you can continue.
Ms. Wood, please.
You had me at a good stopping point. I was done explaining the changes that the Planning Board had recommended.
Okay. I go to the general counsel. Does anyone have any questions for Ms. Wood? Counselor Badanza?
Ms. Wood, I understand what your explanation about you need a sort of administrative point where you can ask them to do this. Is it objectionable to have that language where you could actually, they could come in even voluntarily, potentially, and post it earlier than their request for the certificate of occupancy? I'm thinking in a long, complicated site plan, they might want to get a head start on the work and understand what the surety's gonna be. Is that, is that the feat you're, you know, I know you need a drop-dead sort of time, right?
I'm just thinking how the departments work and how we do deal day by day. And enforcement-wise, that's, there's gotta be a trigger.
Right. So you have the outside. They can't do it later than the request for the certificate of occupancy. But it seems to me being able to do it earlier ...
I wouldn't be opposed to earlier if the developer or entity chose that path.
Okay. So you're covered with what you guys want, which is that you want to know that, at a certain point, it has to be done. That's, so that is preserved by what I'm suggesting, because it can't be done later than the request for the certificate of occupancy, but it can be done earlier. So if that's not objectionable, I'd feel more comfortable with that.
I'm not, I don't object to that, no.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Are there any other members of the council that would like to question Ms. Wood on this proposed zoning ordinance? Counselor Brady?
Actually, I just want to compliment you on the writing of this. There is no outline to use, because this is probably one of the first communities to have this, if I'm correct. So hats off to you.
Thank you.
All right, then. Excuse me. At this time, I think I'm gonna go to the public. Is there anyone in attendance this evening that would like to speak in favor of or in opposition to Petition 24-22? For the second time, is there anyone in the public that would like to speak in favor of or in opposition to Petition 24-22? And for the third and final time, is there anyone present this evening that would like to speak either in favor of or in opposition to Petition 24-22? Seeing none, I would declare the public hearing closed. All right.
And we have one more that was supposed to be at 6:50.
And we are, okay. Petition 20-22. Elizabeth Wood, on behalf of the Planning Board, requests to amend the zoning ordinance pertaining to the parking of unregistered vehicles, R.E. overflow lots. I am in receipt of a letter from the Planning and Development Director dated March 8, 2022, and it's regarding Petition 20-22, overflow lots, to amend the zoning ordinance pertaining to the parking of unregistered vehicles. It reads as follows. Attention, City Council. On 3/7/22, the Planning Board voted six to nothing to continue the public hearing for Petition 20-22, R.E. zoning amendment, R.E. overflow lots, to amend the zoning ordinance pertaining to the parking of unregistered vehicles, to 4/4/22 at 6:40 p.m. The Planning Board wishes to make amendments to the proposed zoning language prior to the adoption of the zoning amendment by the City Council. In order to come up with a draft that works for all parties, including relevant city departments, the Planning Board has formed a subcommittee to work on a revised draft of this item. Included in this subcommittee are the following. The Health Director, Conservation Agent, Building Commissioner, Chair of the Licensing Commission, and Property Owner Nicholas Piero III. This subcommittee will be scheduled to meet prior to the next public hearing on 4/4/22. Once the Board has received recommendations from the subcommittee and agree upon language Once the board has received recommendations from the subcommittee and agree upon language and close the hearing, I will provide you with further correspondence, including the exact language that is recommended. This will be after the 4/4/22 hearing date. Regards, Elizabeth Wood, AICP Planning and Development Director. In light of this, Ms. Wood, if you have nothing to add, if you do?
The letter pretty much explains it all. We do have a subcommittee hearing, or meeting, set up for March 21st.
Okay. I mean, at this time, I think I'd be suggesting that we give this further time, but I'm going to check with the other members of my committee. Councillor Badanza?
Yeah, I think it would be, under those circumstances, logical to continue the public hearing and give the petition further.
Councillor Pauline Cormier?
I agree.
Are there any members of the city council that would like to comment on this? Okay, let me go to the public. Is there anyone in attendance this evening that would like to speak in favor of or in opposition to petition 20-22? For the second time, is there anyone present that would like to speak in opposition or in favor of petition 20-22? And for the third and final time, is there anyone in attendance this evening that would like to speak in behalf of or in opposition to petition 20-22? Seeing none, Mr. President, I would declare this, I will ask for further time.
Okay, and continue the...
Before we do that, I think Ms. Wood had a...
Oh, I didn't know how long, if you wanted me to stay.
Will we continue in the public?
I think we're good. We're just going to further the time.
Okay.
Thank you for coming on.
We probably should, so we don't forget. So she'll know. Madam Clerk, do we have a time to continue to?
I would suggest March 28 at 6:35 p.m.
They're not going to even...
They're not going to even need them, huh?
They're not going to meet on 4th, yeah.
April 11, then, at 6:50 p.m.
So we can do that. We'll vote on that when we vote to give it further time in session. That sound good? Okay. Now going to move on to the public forum. Public forum is an opportunity for any member of the audience to speak on any matter specifically listed on the council agenda. Speakers will be asked to come to the microphone and state their formal name and address, along with identifying the specific item or items they wish to address. Each speaker is respectfully asked to keep their comments within a two-minute timeframe. The council will not be responding or answering any questions. However, at the discretion of the city council president, clarification may be given. Would anybody like to speak at the public forum? If so, please step to the microphone and state your name and address for the record. Once again, would anybody like to speak at the public forum? And for the third and final time, would anybody like to speak at the public forum? Seeing none, I declare the public forum closed. We are now back in session, and we are back to the approval of the records of February 14, 2022. I believe, Councillor Frida, you had some comments.
Yes, Mr. President, I do. Recall, the last meeting, we had a disagreement as to your ability to refuse my abstention, and I suggested that I was going to seek a legal opinion, which I have done. And bear with me. I'll read it into the record.
Councillor Frida, I just want to say this. I think the question here is, are the minutes of the February 14 meeting as presented in order? They're in their verbatim. What we are asking to do right now is to put minutes on record of what transpired at a meeting. What transpired is what transpired. They're all verbatim. That's what we're being asked to do right now, is put records, is to approve them as they happened, as the meeting transpired.
You have forced me into spending a lot of money for a legal opinion. You're going to tell me now you're not going to let me read that into the record? Is that what you're telling me right now?
Councillor Frida, we are approving minutes of a meeting of a month ago.
Approving minutes that I disputed. And because I disputed it...
Okay.
I got a legal opinion on it, and you're not going to let that legal opinion hold.
And the city's attorney has...
Because you made a mistake. You don't want to hear any of the legal opinion?
And the city's attorney has weighed in as well.
The city attorney spoke with my attorney.
He has reviewed all of those minutes.
The city attorney spoke with my attorney.
Do we have an email from him that he's approved, that he's looked at these minutes and he's okay with them?
Yes.
And the city attorney spoke with my attorney.
Okay. That's what the clerk is telling me she has in writing from the city's attorney.
And in the research, there are two lines that jump out, and I think they're important to say, that you were told on more than one occasion that if somebody requests an abstention for a personal reason or a conflict of interest...
Councillor Frida.
...it should be granted. This is really, this is important to a lot of people, not just me. I tried to impress that upon you without having to divulge the reason for my conflict at two different meetings. You have an obligation to tell me something. You granted my abstention the first time. You agreed with the abstention on the very same topic, and two weeks later, you refused the abstention.
Councillor Frida, the question tonight is, are the minutes from February 14 in order? That's the question before us. Are the minutes from February 14 in order? They were typed...
That's really such an abuse of power.
They were typed in verbatim...
That is such an abuse of power.
And approved by the city's attorney. That's what, that's what the city clerk has indicated to me.
Oh, now we'll blame it to the city clerk?
She just said she had, she asked Brian Riley, and she has it in writing from him. That's what she just told me. Councillor Shalfo Zephyr?
Yeah, thank you very much. Unrelated to Councillor Frida's issue, I also have something that I do want to double-check. So from my perspective, the minutes are not accurate, and I want to go back to the videotape to ensure that anything that I'm recorded as saying, I in fact did say.
Okay.
So that's my perspective, and that's on page three.
Okay. Councillor Brady, did you, did I see your hand as well?
No, I'm good.
Okay. Anybody else? Okay, I'm going to, I'm going to put this right back to the Chair of Records.
When I reviewed the rules, the keeper of the records is to keep the minutes. We have an entire transcript of what was said and what was done during the course of the hearing. No matter what the dispute is between Councillor Frida and our council president, that's not going to change what was said on the minutes of the meeting of February 14. This is a record of what was said that day and what came up. It's the official record. It's a transcript. It's verbatim. The city clerk's office was very good to us, and they put it in transcript form. It was run through Brian Riley's office. It comes back as, this is a fair and accurate representation of what happened. Councillor Shalfo Zephyr, I apologize, and I know that you brought up that there was some issues, but it's been since February 14 now. Can I inquire as to when those changes, at the last meeting, you said that you had some changes that you didn't think were significant at that point, and now I'm hearing tonight that there's significant changes? So I don't know where that came from. I didn't receive an email. I don't know if the city clerk's office received an email with any changes. But as I said, this is from the 14th. If there was anything, it should have been brought up prior to this evening.
Through the chair to the Ward Two councillor. Yes, I did email the city clerk's office, and the city clerk, you know, can certainly speak to that.
Okay. Madam Clerk, do we have, do we know when that came in?
I got an email from Councillor Shalfo Zephyr on March 7, when I was in the middle of doing the transcript, and she recommends on page three, fifth paragraph, Councillor Shalfo Zephyr asked if the group of chiefs could, instead of influence, put encourage the academy at all, and then to expand the number of recruits trained to meet the demand of new police officers. Seventh paragraph, Councillor Shalfo Zephyr asked if the chiefs could present the issue and then to add to the training academies to help expand training capacity. And then page five, third paragraph, Councillor Shalfo Zephyr asked the fire department personnel how they take care of the storm drains, and we are striking not to get contaminated and putting at a site that has experienced a hazardous spill to prevent or contain possible contamination. The fire department explained they have a standard protocol to mitigate hazardous spills and protect storm drains.
Okay. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Mr. President, it would be my opinion that those are changes that can be made. And we're talking about adding just a few different words and a few sentences, and I think that we can do that, and based on that, I can, unless any other councillor has anything in particular they'd like to add, that we can accept the minutes pending those few changes.
That were just written, that are in writing. Okay.
And that would be, that would be my position.
Councillor Brady?
I just need some clarification. I apologize. You probably all know this, but being the first time. If we approve these minutes, and a councillor has an objection to how it happened, are we just discounting that? I mean, there was a question of, is it a no vote or was it an abstention? If we accept it, the minutes as is, it's a no vote, correct? I'm just asking the question.
Well, that's what, that's what the president ruled, right or wrong. That's what he ruled. So if councillor at large has an objection to what the president did, I suppose there are the forums to address that. I mean, she could bring it up on the old business tonight, I suppose, or she could bring it out outside of this body. But I think the point that others are trying to make is, it's what happened, right, wrong, or indifferent. It's what happened. So all that's being approved with the minutes is that it happened. Doesn't mean it's right, but it happened. I think that's all it is. So if councillor is successful, the councillor at large is successful in convincing somebody or someone that that shouldn't have been recorded, that that decision shouldn't have been made, then the record would be updated at that point in the future. That's all.
Thank you.
Yep, you're welcome.
Okay. Are there any other questions? Councillor Frida?
Through the chair, to the councillor across from me. You're well-versed in this. You've been a city solicitor. You're fully aware of the council. For 28 years, to never have an abstention denied from what any research has shown, and I had to spend a lot of money to try to protect people that are involved in this? This was an important decision, and this, this was not, Rule 18, I don't care how you look at it, that's what he's hanging his hat on. Rule 18 says when you refuse to vote. I did not refuse to vote. That's when you call in and nay vote, when there's a refusal to vote. And that's what's been decided more than once. So there is an issue with what happened. I understand what's in the minutes is in the minutes.
Right.
But from my perspective, for anybody that needs to get those minutes, for whatever reason, and I can't get into it, believe me, I would love to get into it because I'd love to really throw this whole thing right in somebody's lap, and I can't do it. Someday, I will be able to. But this whole issue is going to be important when, when and if somebody gets these minutes and uses them for a particular purpose. That's, that's the whole issue. Yeah, I understand what's in the minutes is what happened. I understand that. But there, there should not be a reluctance to allow the public who watched this whole thing understand what exactly happened and why we do what we do. And that's an issue, and this was wrong. I don't care how you want to look at it, you made a mistake. This, and the city solicitor spoke with my attorney, and you won't even let me talk about it.
Councillor Frida?
That's real, you know, I don't...
No, that's not appropriate in this forum right now.
Of course it's not appropriate.
No, it's not.
Absolutely not.
It's not.
Why would it be appropriate if it's not going to be in your favor?
Right.
Wouldn't it be appropriate?
Because it's possible litigation against the city, and that's not what we're talking about right now. Once again, are the minutes of February 14 in order as they transpired, as what was said and done, done? And the...
We will, in the court of public opinion, court of public opinion, and it's, I'm really very disappointed. This could happen to any, if we're setting any kind of new policy here, a new, a new way of dealing with abstentions and dealing with discussions about conflicts, and we go against the law of the Commonwealth, and we make up our rules as we go along, this can happen to any councillor that's going to start doing it this way.
Okay, once again, are the records, are the records for February 14, Madam Chairwoman, in order?
Mr. President, I find, pending the few changes that Councillor Shalfo Zephyr brought forward tonight, that we can make those, I find the minutes to be in order.
Okay. Thank you very much. They will be put on file. Moving on to communications from the mayor, C-53.
So you're not taking a vote on those? You're not taking a vote?
We've never voted.
Didn't you vote the last couple of times to, didn't you vote last time to accept the minutes?
We've never voted to accept minutes.
No? No?
C-53...
I think the procedure has been as long as I's been here, is that the president will ask if there's an objection.
Right, but I thought there was a vote, the last meeting or the meeting before.
We've never voted. Madam Clerk, C-53?
C-53. Dean J. Mazzarella, Mayor, requests to accept the local transportation funding aid of $1,132,495 from the Massachusetts Department of Transportation into the Highway State Aid Receipts Reserve for Appropriation account regarding Chapter 90 supplemental budget award for fiscal year 2023.
C-53 is referred to the Chairman of Finance.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is the first time on the agenda, and therefore, I request it be given regular course.
Okay, C-53 will be given regular course. Moving on to C-54...
Mr. President, I have, I have a comment.
Okay.
I don't believe, I could be wrong. Correct me if I'm wrong. I don't believe this is a supplemental budget. Isn't this the regular Chapter 90 money?
Uh, let's see.
We did get a letter from, I think we got a letter from the governor somewhere.
The letter we got was the, was the, the letter of an award, so it would be the original, the original Chapter 90 money.
I'm happy to amend the regarding line. We copied it from the mayor's header, from his paper, what he submitted.
I think the councillor at large is right.
No problem. I can, it's no problem.
Yeah, that should, that should not have been put in there, supplemental. It's our regular Chapter 90 money.
Okay, no problem.
That's due and owing to the fact that we actually do go beyond Chapter 90 some years.
Right.
That's, that's a good thing, but it's a good point.
Okay. C-54, Madam Clerk?
C-54. Dean J. Mazzarella, Mayor, requests an appropriation of $1,359,327.62 be made to the Sewer Department capital outlay expense account, the same amount to be transferred from the excess and deficiency account.
And C-54 will be given, will be referred to the Chairman of Finance?
And then given regular course.
And then given regular course. C-54 has been given regular course. C-55?
C-55. Dean J. Mazzarella, Mayor, requests an appropriation of $3,700,000 be made to the stabilization fund, the same amount to be transferred from the excess and deficiency account, undesignated fund balance.
C-55 is also referred to the Chairman of Finance.
Thank you, Mr. President. Once again, regular course.
C-55 has been given regular course. C-56?
C-56. Dean J. Mazzarella, Mayor, requests an appropriation of $1,424,576.10 be made to the Water Department capital outlay expense account, the same amount to be transferred from the excess and deficiency account.
And C-56 will be referred to the Chairman of Finance.
And once again, regular course, Mr. President.
C-56 has been given regular course. C-57?
C-57. Dean J. Mazzarella, Mayor, requests an appropriation of $19,964 be made to the Leinster Retirement System, the same amount to be transferred from the unfunded liability account.
And C-57 is also referred to the Chairman of Finance.
C-57 should be given regular course, please.
And C-57 is given regular course. C-58?
C-58. Dean J. Mazzarella, Mayor, requests an appropriation of $250,000 be made to the Fire Department Salary and Wages Account, the same amount to be transferred from the stabilization fund regarding overtime for department.
And C-58 is referred to the Chairman of Finance.
Again, first time on the agenda, regular course, please.
C-58 has been given regular course. C-59?
C-59. Dean J. Mazzarella, Mayor, requests the amount of $250,000 be transferred to the DPW Sidewalks and Carbing account, same to be transferred from the excess and deficiency account regarding annual sidewalk repair program.
C-59 is also referred to the Chairman of Finance.
And once again, regular course, please.
C-59 has been given regular course. C-59 has been given regular course. Moving on to appointments, Madam Clerk?
Dean J. Mazzarella, Mayor, request the appointment of Peggy Stevenson, 100 Weathervein, oh, excuse me, Weathervein Drive, to the Recreation Commission, term to expire April 15th, 2025.
And the appointment is referred to the Chairwoman of Ways and Means.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm going to ask that we schedule an interview on this matter. Madam Clerk, if you would invite Ms. Stevenson down for an interview on March 28th at 6:40, given regular course, please.
Okay. So this has been given regular course with an interview at 6:40 p.m. on March 28th, 2022. Moving on to reappointments.
Can I read them in block, Mr. President?
You may, if there's no objection.
No objection.
Okay.
Dean J. Mazzarella, Mayor, request the reappointment of Michelle Hagstrom, 152 Sacramento Drive, to the Board of Appeals, term to expire April 15th, 2025. Dean J. Mazzarella, Mayor, request the reappointment of Nicole Pear, 29 Oakland Hollow Road, to the Board of Health, term to expire April 15th, 2025. Dean J. Mazzarella, Mayor, request the reappointment of Peter Lanza, 16 Depot Square, to the Board of Health, term to expire April 15th, 2025. Dean J. Mazzarella, Mayor, request the reappointment of John Diggins, 59 Rustic Drive, to the Council on Aging, term to expire April 15th, 2025. Dean J. Mazzarella, Mayor, request the reappointment of Patricia Valley, 16 Arrowhead Road, to the Council on Aging, term to expire April 15th, 2025. Dean J. Mazzarella, Mayor, request the reappointment of Phyllis Gagnier, 34 Fairmount Street, to the Council on Aging, term to expire April 15th, 2025. Dean J. Mazzarella, Mayor, request the reappointment of Donna Smith, 161 Spruce Street, number 411, to the Council on Aging, term to expire April 15th, 2025. Dean J. Mazzarella, Mayor, request the reappointment of Robert Wilson, 19 Brown Ave, to the Cultural Commission, term to expire April 15th, 2025. Dean J. Mazzarella, Mayor, request the reappointment of Luann Longennecker, 90 Dobson Circle, to the Cultural Commission, term to expire April 15th, 2025. Dean J. Mazzarella, Mayor, request the reappointment of Dean Carlson, 28 Iris Road, to the Disability Commission, term to expire April 15th, 2025. Dean J. Mazzarella, Mayor, request the reappointment of Thomas Thalen, 48 Judy Drive, to the Disability Commission, term to expire April 15th, 2025. Dean J. Mazzarella, Mayor, request the reappointment of Joanne Donfro, 231 Helena Street, to the Library Board of Trustees, term to expire April 15th, 2025. Dean J. Mazzarella, Mayor, request the reappointment of Susan Shalfo Zephyr, 900 West Street, to the Library Board of Trustees, term to expire April 15th, 2025. Dean J. Mazzarella, Mayor, request the reappointment of Thomas Carrion, 56 Saddlebend Drive, to the Planning Board, term to expire April 15th, 2027, and yes, that is the correct date. We double-checked. Dean J. Mazzarella, Mayor, request the reappointment of Teresa McEwen, 500 Brooks Pond Road, to the Recreation Commission, term to expire April 15th, 2025.
Okay. And all of these appointments will be referred to the Chairwoman of Ways and Means.
Mr. President, that is for regular course.
And all those have been given regular course. Moving on to, excuse me, 41-22, Madam Clerk?
41-22. Gregory C. Chapdolane, Purchasing Agent, request to enter into a six-year contract for risk management services regarding risk management services for the Treasurer's Office.
And 41-22 gets referred to the Chairman of Finance?
Regular course, Mr. President.
Okay. 41-22 has been given regular course. Moving on to 42-22.
May, oh, we're, never mind about block because we're going to have to set public hearings.
Right.
42-22. Massachusetts Electric Company, doing business as National Grid and Verizon New England, Inc., request permission to locate poles, wires, and fixtures, including the necessary sustaining and protecting fixtures along and across the following public way. Nashua Street. National Grid to install one jointly owned pole on Nashua Street, beginning at a point approximately 180 feet north of the center line of the intersection of Nashua Street and Lawrence Street, and continuing approximately 15 feet in an east direction, installing P32-50 with 40 feet C2 to provide service to 280 Nashua Street. Wherefore, appraise that after due notice and hearing as provided by law, it be granted a location for and permission to erect and maintain poles and wires, together with such sustaining and protecting fixtures as it may find necessary, said poles to be erected substantially in accordance with the plan filed herewith marked Nashua Street, Leominster, Massachusetts. Also for permission to lay and maintain underground laterals, cables, and wires to, in the above intersecting public ways for the purpose of making connections with such poles and buildings as each of said petitioners may desire for distributing purposes. Your petitioner agrees to reserve space for one cross arm at a suitable point on each of said poles for the fire, police, telephone, and telegraph signal wires belonging to the municipality and used by it exclusively for municipal purposes.
And 42-22 is referred to the Chairwoman of Public Service.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. 42-22 should be given regular course, and we do need to establish a public hearing on March 28th, 2022 at 6:45 p.m.
Okay. So 42-22 will be given regular course with a public hearing to be established on March 28th, 2022 at 6:49 p.m. And I will be abstaining from this vote. It does, it is partially owned, this equipment is partially owned by my employer. All those in favor of establishing this, establishing this public hearing, please signify in the usual manner. Those opposed, by a vote of eight to zero, 42-22 has been given a regular course with that public hearing established. 43-22?
Massachusetts Electric Company, doing business as National Grid and Verizon New England, Inc., request permission to locate poles, wires, and fixtures, including the necessary sustaining and protecting fixtures along and across the following public way. Grandview Ave, National Grid to install three jointly owned poles on Grandview Ave, beginning at a point approximately 20 feet northwest of the center line of the intersection of U Street, and continuing approximately 20 feet in northeast direction. Install pole number 4-50 and anchor on the northeastern side of Grandview Ave between existing poles three and four. Continue 125 degrees northwest, install new pole number nine and two anchors on the northeast side of U Street. Continue 105 degrees west and install new pole number 10 and anchor on the northwest side of U Street. New poles are required for electrical service to three new homes being built on new section of U Street. Wherefore, appraise that after due notice and hearing as provided by law, it be granted a location for and permission to erect and maintain poles and wires, together with such sustaining and protecting fixtures as it may find necessary, said poles to be erected substantially in accordance with the plan filed herewith marked Grandview Ave, Leominster, Massachusetts. Also for permission to lay and maintain underground laterals, cables, and wires in the above or intersecting public ways for the purpose of making connections with such poles and buildings as each of said petitioners may desire for distributing purposes. Your petitioner agrees to reserve space for one cross arm at a suitable point on each of said poles for the fire, police, telephone, and telegraph signal wires belonging to the municipality and used by it exclusively for municipal purposes.
Okay. And 43-22 likewise is referred to the Chairwoman of Public Service?
Thank you very much, Mr. President. 43-22 should be given regular course, and we need to establish a public hearing on March 28th, 2022 at 6:47 p.m.
Okay. So the Chairwoman is recommending we give this regular course with a public hearing of March 28th, 2022 at 6:47 p.m. And once again, this piece of equipment is also going to be partially owned by my employer, so I'm required to abstain. Is there any other questions? Seeing none, all those in favor of establishing the public hearing for March 28th, 2022 at 6:47 p.m., please signify in usual manner. Those opposed, by a vote of eight to zero, the public hearing has been established.
44-22. Massachusetts Electric Company, doing business as National Grid and Verizon New England, Inc., request permission to locate poles, wires, and fixtures, including the necessary sustaining and protecting fixtures along and across the following public way. Field Road, National Grid to relocate one jointly owned pole on Field Road, beginning at a point approximately 150 feet west of the center line of the intersection of Abbott Ave and Field Road, and continuing approximately 15 feet in the south direction. Relocating pole number one with 40-foot C2 approximately 20 feet west from existing pole one. Wherefore, appraise that after due notice and hearing as provided by law, it be granted a location for and permission to erect and maintain poles and wires, together with such sustaining and protecting fixtures as it may find necessary, said poles to be erected substantially in accordance with the plan filed herewith marked Field Road, Leominster, Massachusetts. Also for permission to lay and maintain underground laterals, cables, and wires in the above or intersecting public ways for the purpose of making connections with such poles and buildings as each of said petitioners may desire for distributing purposes. Your petitioner agrees to reserve space for one cross arm at a suitable point on each of said poles for the fire, police, telephone, and telegraph signal wires belonging to the municipality and used by it exclusively for municipal purposes.
Okay. And 44-22 is also referred to the Chairwoman of Public Service?
44-22 should be given regular course, and we also need to establish a public hearing on March 28th, 2022 at 6:49 p.m.
Okay. So the recommendation of the Chairwoman of Public Service is to give 44-22 further time, sorry, regular course, and establish a public hearing of March 28th, 2022 at 6:49 p.m. And once again, this also is partially owned by my employer, once again, so I must abstain. Is there any other comments? If not, all those in favor of establishing the public hearing for March 28th, 2022 at 6:49 p.m., signify in usual manner. Those opposed, by a vote of eight to zero, 44-22 has been given regular, regular course with the public hearing established. And 45-22?
45-22. Massachusetts Electric Company, doing business as National Grid, request permission to locate poles, wires, and fixtures, including the necessary sustaining and protecting fixtures along and across the following public way. Pioneer Drive, National Grid to install one solely owned pole on Pioneer Drive, beginning at a point approximately 815 feet north of the center line of the intersection of Orchard Hill Park in Pioneer Drive, and continuing approximately 15 feet in an east direction, installing P12 with 40 feet C2 to provide service to 130 Pioneer Drive. Wherefore, appraise that after due notice and hearing as provided by law, it be granted a location for and permission to erect and maintain poles and wires, together with such sustaining and protecting fixtures as it may find necessary, said poles to be erected substantially in accordance with the plan filed herewith marked Pioneer Drive, Leominster, Massachusetts. Also for permission to lay and maintain underground laterals, cables, and wires in the above or intersecting public ways for the purpose of making connections with such poles and buildings as each of said petitioners may desire for distributing purposes. Your petitioner agrees to reserve space for one cross arm at a suitable point on each of said poles for the fire, police, telephone, and telegraph signals, wires belonging to the municipality and used by it exclusively for municipal purposes.
Okay. 45-22 is also referred to the Chairwoman of Public Service?
45-22 should be given regular course, and we need to establish the public hearing on March 28th, 2022 at 6:51 p.m.
Okay. 45-22 has been given regular course, and we are suggesting a public hearing of March 28th, 2022 at 6:51 p.m. All those in favor of establishing that public hearing signify in usual manner. Those opposed, by a vote of nine to zero. I will note, my employer is not, not mentioned on this one. It's a singly owned pole, so I will be voting on it. By a vote of nine to zero, that public hearing has been established. Moving on to 46-22?
46-22. Hunter Bajorkman, on behalf of Eco ATM LLC, request to renew license to deal secondhand articles at 11 Jungle Road.
And this is referred to the Chairwoman of Ways and Means?
Mr. President, requesting regular course.
Okay. And 46-22 has been given regular course. Moving on to matters before the City Council, does the Chairman of Finance have a financial report?
Yes, I do, Mr. President. Starting with the stabilization fund. We began the fiscal year on July 1st of 2021 with a balance of $19,904,603. During the course of the fiscal year, we have added to that balance interest in the amount of $29,621. And if approved at the next meeting, we will have a free cash transfer in of $3.7 million, which would then bring the balance to $23,634,224. Appropriations voted by the City Council in prior meetings or scheduled this evening or in, at our next meeting as well, total $3,9998, which will then bring the balance of the stabilization account, assuming all of those appropriations are ultimately passed, to $19,733,226. In keeping with what I started the last couple of meetings, I also want to illuminate some additional financial material for the city generally and for the council. So I had the comptroller print out our debt listings, and you, you would have received during the week an email with two sheets attached. One, bands, which are bonds and bond anticipation notes, short-term debt for the city of Leominster, and the second with our outstanding bonds. The city has traditionally used bands to finance smaller projects, things in the range of four or five million, maybe upwards to eight or nine million dollars. And the attraction there is it obviates the need to go out to a formal bond, and the legal fees associated with a, to create a bond or investment quality securities can often be as much as $100,000. So over the years, the city has saved a lot of money by using this short-term debt. We currently have really only one band, and that's a clean water project with a beginning balance of $2,935,113, which through a state program is currently being carried at 0% interest. You'll see also on that sheet, there are two bands, one both for police station, one for 1.5 million, the other one for 2 million. Those have actually been incorporated into the first police station bond. So once the interest payments are made on those, or the payments are made on those, those will no longer be banned. So those are about to come off of that schedule. If you flip over to the debt schedule, you'll see the first two items are school-related, school remodel and reconstruction bonds, one with an original amount of $9,155,000 and the other one of $1,998,000. I'm happy to report with the payments being made on those in this fiscal year, $1,050,000 and $300,000, that those will be retired. That leaves only one bond, which was just issued for the police station, in the amount of $21,240,000. Now, that's not going to be the total cost of the police station. But the way they decided to do this was to fund the lion's share of the police station costs with the first bond and use a cleanup bond, once they know what the total costs are. Of course, at this point, that's a little bit unpredictable. I think they probably have a pretty good idea what that's going to cost when it's all done, but that can fluctuate. So the way that bond is being handled, it's a 30-year bond. It starts off with a 5% interest rate for six years, then it ratchets it down to 5%, 4% interest rather, for six years, and then the remaining term is paid at 3%. It can be refinanced, and that's part of the reason for the, the cost of the interest, is we do have a refinance option with that bond. Like I said, eventually, when the project is closed out, there'll be a second and smaller bond at the end of the project, probably with a shorter payout. The rest of the bonds that we've issued are either water improvement or sewer improvement bonds, which are funded by ratepayers. So those are not affecting the general fund, the budget. And as you know, Roger Brooks has been down here on several occasions outlining some of those bonds. Some of them at very favorable rates of interest. You can see, if you look at the sewer improvement bonds, many of them are being carried at 0% interest or very low interest rates. So that's, that's sort of good news. So that's where we are with our debt, and I just wanted to, like I said, bring a little bit more information with these reports to the council. And tonight, that's my financial report.
Okay. Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. Anybody have any questions or comments? Seeing none, we will move on to items under Finance. C-50, Mr. Chairman, are you ready to report?
I am. C-50. Dean J. Mazzarella, Mayor, request an appropriation of $50,000 be made to the Gallagher Building Maintenance Account, the same amount to be transferred from the Gallagher Building Revolving Account regarding to cover expenses related to the Gallagher Building Maintenance. Many of you may recall that this is a pretty common occurrence with us. We have a revolving account where the rents are collected, and then we will transfer money from that revolving rent account to the expense account. If you look at your Munis report on page 2, item number 19220010, there is no, we never make an original appropriation in the, in the statutory budget for that because, as I've said, we always essentially carry money forward from the rent account and pay the expenses that way. Currently, that account is overfunded in the amount of $38,285.49. And so when we. dollars and forty-nine cents. And so when we transfer this fifty thousand dollars, if we vote affirmatively to do that, that'll leave a balance of a little, about eleven-thousand, eight hundred dollars after we pay what we've already spent in maintenance on the Gallagher Building. Based on that, Mr. President, would be my position to grant C dash fifty, and I'd ask you to poll my committee.
Okay, Counselor Pauline Cormier.
I agree.
Counselor Angelini.
I would be in agreement as well, and thank the Chairman for his detailed explanation.
Okay, all right. Does anybody have any questions or comments regarding C dash fifty? Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of granting C dash fifty signify in usual manner. Those opposed, by a vote of nine to zero, C dash fifty has been granted. Does the Chairman have an order?
Yes, I do, Mr. President. Order that the sum of fifty thousand dollars be made to the Gallagher Building Maintenance Account, the same amount to be transferred from the Gallagher Building Revolving Account. Move for the adoption of the order.
Okay, you've heard the request for the adoption of the order. All those in favor of adopting the order signify by saying yea.
Yea.
Those opposed, by a vote of nine to zero, C dash fifty has been adopted. Moving on to C dash fifty-one.
C dash fifty-one, Dean J. Mazzarella, Mayor, requests an appropriation of twenty thousand dollars to be made to the building, the municipal building maintenance expense account, same amount to be transferred from the stabilization fund. This is something that is not usual. This item is found on your Munis report, page two, just below the Gallagher Building expense item, number one-nine-two-two-zero-zero-four-zero. It is funded every year, and in the original statutory budget, it was funded with fifty thousand, two hundred dollars. Currently, year-to-date expended in that account is forty-nine thousand, seven hundred and fourteen dollars and sixty-three cents, and that's a little bit more than usual because we had to invest in some elevator maintenance. In fact, the elevator itself cost to repair about plus or minus twenty thousand dollars. So that's what's prompting this appropriation request by the mayor. Considering the circumstances and the need to have a functioning elevator, it would be my position, Mr. President, to grant C dash fifty-one, and I'd ask you to poll my committee.
Okay, Counselor Pauline Cormier.
I agree.
Counselor Angelini.
I'll make it unanimous, Mr. President.
Okay, so you've heard the unanimous recommendation to grant C dash fifty-one. Is there any discussion? Counselor Shalfo Zephyr, I think I saw your hand.
Yeah, I just had a quick question. So this is for City Hall, correct?
Yes.
Okay, because it's not stated anywhere in any of the material.
It's the municipal building maintenance account.
Right, right, right. And that is only before-
This is the municipal building.
This is the only municipal building covered under that account?
This is by charter. Technically, this is the municipal building.
Okay.
So it's a definition that we use.
I don't know who "we" is, but it was not clear to me-
It's in the charter.
-that it was City Hall. Well, okay, good. That's good to know. But I think for the public and other people who might read the agenda, it would be helpful, because somebody asked me, which building is it? And I said, I'm pretty sure it's City Hall, but I will just double-check.
It is. It is.
Good. Thank you.
All right. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of granting C dash fifty-one signify in usual manner. Those opposed, by a vote of nine to zero, C dash fifty-one has been granted. Does the Chairman have an order?
Yes, order that the sum of twenty thousand dollars be appropriated to the municipal building maintenance account, same amount to be transferred from the stabilization fund. Move for the adoption of the order.
Okay, you've heard the request for the adoption of the order, and I have to do this in a roll call vote, because this does come from stabilization. So I will begin with Counselor Badanza.
Yea.
Counselor Pauline Cormier.
Yea.
Counselor Ardinger.
Yea.
Counselor Angelini.
Yea.
Counselor Brady.
Yea.
Counselor Shalfo Zephyr.
Yea.
Counselor Deacon.
Yea.
Counselor Frida.
Yea.
And I will be recorded as yea by a vote of nine to zero. C dash fifty-one, the order has been adopted. Moving on to C dash fifty-two.
C fifty-two, Dean J. Mazzarella, Mayor, requests an appropriation of seven thousand dollars be transferred from the Wetland Protection Act Fund to the Conservation Commission's Salary Line for Part-Time Clerks. We have a letter from the Conservation Agent, Ms. Schofield. Dear Mayor Mazzarella, please see the attached request from the Conservation Commission to transfer funds from the Wetland Protection Act Fund. The Commission would like to fund two intern positions this year. Then in coming years, if this is successful, we want to continue these positions. The intern positions will be one intern at a time for a short period of time. At the last conservation meeting on January twenty-fifth, two thousand and twenty-two, the Commission voted unanimously to submit this request to you and the City Council. So as you can see, the agent wants to get a little part-time help by use of interns, and I'm willing to take the chance with her and see how that works out. So be my position, Mr. President, to grant C fifty-two. I'd ask you to poll my committee.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Counselor Pauline Cormier.
I agree.
Counselor Angelini.
I agree as well, Mr. President.
Okay, you've heard the unanimous recommendation of the Finance Committee to grant C dash fifty-two. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of granting C dash fifty-two signify in usual manner. Those opposed, by a vote of nine to zero, C dash fifty-two has been granted. Does the Chairman have an order?
I do, Mr. President. Order that the sum of seven thousand dollars be transferred from the Wetland Protection Act Fund to the Conservation Commission's Salary Line for Part-Time Clerks. Are we funding two interns? Move for the adoption of the order.
Okay, you've heard the request for the adoption of the order. All those in favor of adopting the order signify by saying yea.
Yea.
Those opposed, by a vote of nine to zero, the order has been adopted. Moving on to forty dash twenty-two. Mr. Chairman of Finance?
Yes, Mr. President. Forty dash twenty-two, Caitlin Huffman, City Clerk, requests to accept a gift of fourteen chairs valued at seven hundred and fourteen dollars per chair from AIS Inc. of Lemister, Mass. Our charter requires us to accept these types of donations. Very generous on AIS's part to donate those chairs. The one I'm sitting in right now, I can tell you isn't all that comfortable. Hope these are better. Yeah, we'll have to check that out later. I say why look a gift to us in the mouth? So it'd be my position, Mr. President, to accept the gift. Can I ask you to poll members of my committee?
Counselor Pauline Cormier.
My back agrees.
Counselor Angelini.
I was given the opportunity to test one, and I say we accept. Thank AIS for their generosity as well, and our learned clerk for her ability to garner such gifts. She's good.
Mm-hmm. I agree. All right, so you've heard the unanimous recommendation of the Finance Committee to grant forty dash twenty-two. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of granting forty dash twenty-two signify by saying yea.
Yea.
Those opposed, by a vote of nine to zero, forty dash twenty-two has been granted. And obviously, Madam Clerk, if you could, unless there's any objection, you know, make sure that they get an official letter from the City Council, from your office, thanking them for their very kind and generous donation to the city of Lemister. It is very, very much appreciated.
Of course.
Moving on to items under Legal Affairs, thirty-nine dash twenty-two. Mr. Chairman, are you ready to report?
Oops, excuse me. I am, Mr. President. I just was signing one of those money orders. I apologize.
That's fine.
We met on this, we had a hearing on this earlier this evening. It's pretty straightforward. This will obviously be for us to have an ordinance in place, the standard for electioneering, a policy in place that will be good until expired by legislative changes at some point, I assume. And I would certainly be supportive of it, and I would ask you to poll members of my committee.
Okay, Counselor Badanza.
Noting the small amendment we had during our hearing, I would be in favor of adopting it with that additional language.
Just for the record, I think somebody should probably officially make that make that motion too, to add that in there.
Yeah.
And then, and then we can circle back and have a have a another recommendation based on the updated version.
I'll move to amend the petition by adding the words, or our other designated polling place. I think were the words in question. Is that correct, Madam Clerk?
Or any other designated applicable voting place.
Okay. I'll make that motion.
Okay, so we have a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
A second.
Seconded by Counselor Pauline Cormier. Is there any discussion on the motion? If not, all those in favor of that motion to add that language, as stated, signify by saying yea.
Yea.
Those opposed, by a vote of nine to zero, this has been amended. So, Mr. Chairman, I will go back to you now and ask once again for your recommendation on the amended version.
I would recommend that we pass the amended version of the petition, and I apologize for missing that earlier.
No, that's not a problem at all. Counselor Badanza?
I'm in favor.
Okay, Counselor Pauline Cormier.
I agree.
Okay, so you've heard the unanimous recommendation of the Legal Affairs Committee to grant thirty-nine dash twenty-two as amended. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, we should do this in a roll call, right? Seeing none, all those in favor will do a roll call, beginning with Counselor Badanza.
Yea.
Counselor Pauline Cormier.
Yea.
Counselor Ardinger.
Yea.
Counselor Angelini.
Yea.
Counselor Brady.
Yea.
Counselor Shalfo Zephyr.
Yea.
Counselor Deacon.
Yea.
Counselor Frida.
Yea.
And I will be recorded as yea by a vote of nine to zero. Thirty-nine dash twenty-two has been granted. Moving on to twenty dash twenty-two, Mr. Chairman.
Twenty dash twenty-two, I read a letter into the record this evening from the Planning Board informing us that they have they have put together a subcommittee to try to iron out some details on this particular petition regarding overflow lots. So it would be my recommendation this evening, Mr. Chairman, that we give this matter further time, and I believe we were looking, they're not going to deal with it till the fourth of April, I believe. So I think we were looking to put it on our calendar, April eleventh, two thousand and twenty-two, at six fifty.
Yep. Okay.
And I would ask you to poll members of my committee.
Counsel Counsel Badanza.
I'm in accord with both of those.
Counsel Pauline Cormier.
I agree.
Okay, so you've heard the unanimous recommendation of the Legal Affairs Committee to give twenty dash twenty-two further time and to continue the public hearing to April eleventh, two thousand and twenty-two at six fifty P. M. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify in usual manner. Those opposed, by a vote of nine to zero, this has been given further time, and the hearing will be continued till April eleventh at six fifty, six-five-zero P. M. Moving on to twenty-four dash twenty-two, Mr. Chairman, are you ready to report?
I am indeed, Mr. President. Won't make the same mistake twice, I can assure you. This was, this petition was, we had a public hearing earlier. Planning Development Director was present, you know, pined on the petition. During the debate, some amendments were offered. And if I may, hopefully, some, the amendments are as follows. Under fifty-nine-point-one performance guarantee, the second, the line before the last line, guarantee shall be collected, and then we want to insert "by the city," "at," or "before" the time a certificate of occupancy is requested. Then moving on, fifty-nine-point-one-point-one, release of performance guarantee. We want to strike the word "bylaw" in the second sentence and insert the word "ordinance." Going down to the fourth sentence, I'm going to read it, section twenty-two dash fifty-nine-point-one, by sending a statement of completion and request for a, and right here, delete "by" to the Planning Board. Delete the word "by." And then we have another change at the bottom of that fifty-nine-point-one-point-one, release of performance guarantees, which would be the last sentence. So it would read, bond or other security returned to the person or entity who furnished it.
Okay.
Then there's one more change, Mr. Mr. President. Fifty-nine-point-one-point-two, refusal of release. At the bottom of that paragraph, we want to strike the word "bylaw" and insert the word "ordinance," and the rest is in order.
Okay.
Mr. President, I would move to amend the ordinance with the changes as the Chairman stated.
Okay, so you want to you want to make that motion to amend as stated? Is there any, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Counselor Pauline Cormier, is there any comments or discussion on the amendments? If none, all those in favor of the amendments signify in usual manner. Those opposed, by a vote of nine to zero, this has been amended, so I will give this back to the Chairman and have you come up with a recommendation.
Yes, Mr. President. I would recommend that we adopt, we pass this ordinance in its amended form, and I would ask you to poll members of my committee.
Counsel Badanza.
I'm in favor.
Counselor Pauline Cormier.
I agree.
Okay, you've heard the unanimous recommendation of the Legal Affairs Committee to grant twenty-four dash twenty-two as amended. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of granting, well, actually, I'm going to do this one in a roll call vote, beginning with Counsel Badanza.
Yea.
Counselor Pauline Cormier.
Yea.
Counselor Ardinger.
Yea.
Counselor Angelini.
Yea.
Counselor Brady.
Yea.
Counselor Shalfo Zephyr.
Yea.
Counselor Deacon.
Yea.
Counselor Frida. And I will be recorded as yea by a vote of nine to zero. Twenty-four dash twenty-two has been adopted. There are no other items under new business. Does anybody have any new business? Old business?
I have an old business item.
Counsel Badanza?
Yes, it's been a little bit of time since we had any report from our legislative delegation on C eighty-nine, which many of you may recall was the civil service exemption for the police chief and police captain. Last time we asked back in early November, both Senator Cronin and Representative Higgins were very prompt with a update to us where those, where that legislation stood.
If I may, I kind of would really, I can appreciate you wanting to give an explanation, but it's really not on our agenda, and I don't know how deep we should go into a discussion about, I mean, I'm sure there's going to start to be discussion, and I'm sure there's people that possibly might want to be here this evening to speak about. I just want to caution the open meeting law that it's not on our agenda, so.
Well, certainly is old business, but I, all I want is, if you're not object to it, is ask the clerk to get an update for us.
Perfect, okay. And then, if we can, we'll put it on the agenda for the next meeting. And if we get any update.
That's fine.
We can discuss whatever we need to discuss.
I don't want to discuss, I just want to, all I was talking about was procedure. I didn't want to go into the substance.
Okay, perfect. All right, so we'll get an update, and we put this on the agenda, and we'll discuss it at the next meeting. Thank you very, very much.
Thank you.
Is there any other new, Counsel Shalfo Zephyr?
It's old business. Is that okay? Okay.
I think we're done with new, unless anybody has any new. You may go into old business.
Okay, great, thank you. I would like to ask the city clerk if she would send a letter to the mayor asking about the process for applying for ARPA funds. I've had two constituents ask me what the process is, and the reason, they've referred me to the City of Fitchburg's website, that has a committee and a whole webpage dedicated to the process and grant guidelines and all kinds of really good information. So this person is interested in applying for ARPA funds, so they would like to know what the process is. Thank you.
Okay. Any other old business? Counsel Frida.
Yes, Mr. President, and I'm going to go back to Rule eighteen, and this is a little bit lengthy, so I'm going to ask for some indulgence, but it is a legal opinion that I received. Is it okay with you?
Sure.
Lemister City Council, Rule eighteen. Dear Counsel Frida, I have reviewed the issues regarding Rule eighteen of the rules of Lemister City Council herein referred to as Rule eighteen. Specifically, I have been requested to review whether or not Rule eighteen requires councilors to request permission from the council president to be excused from votes, and whether or not the city council president should approve or disapprove of these requests. Additionally, there remains a question as to how to record abstentions. As you will see from this letter, it is my opinion that councilors may excuse themselves from votes, and abstentions should be counted separately from that of nay votes. Therefore, I respectfully disagree that the provision of the city solicitor's email dated February twenty-fifth, two thousand and twenty-two, that the rule provides that if a councillor requests to be excused from voting, and that is not granted, he or she is recorded as having made a nay vote, email two twenty-five, two thousand and twenty-two. I disagree with this opinion, as it is inconsistent with the prior practice and not in the best interest of the city, of the council and the city. Rule eighteen provides, every matter which comes before the city council shall be put to a vote, the result of which shall be recorded. Every member of the city council president shall be required to vote on every question coming before the city council, unless specifically excused by reason of interest. coming before the city council unless specifically excused by reason of interest. In the event a member refuses to vote on any question or motion prior to being excused from voting by the council, his refusal shall be considered as a negative vote. Nothing in this rule requires approval of one's conflicting situation by the council president. According to the plain language of the rule, approval would be required by city council. The council can allow, can allow for one to excuse themselves by rule prior, prior practice or by motion and vote. There is sufficient record to establish a prior practice within the city of Leominster. My opinion is primarily informed by prior practice of the Leominster City Council. According to my research, the prior practice is that a councillor excuses themselves by declaring a conflict or potential conflict, and abstentions were recorded separately in the votes. A full examination of each abstention vote goes beyond the scope of my review. However, the council's vote of November 8th, 2021 exemplifies this practice. During the aforementioned city council meeting, an abstention occurred in connection with Measure 10-22. The councillor stated that the reason for the abstention was due to conflict. The council president acknowledged that the councillor excused herself. The vote was taken and recorded as 701. Similarly, during the council meeting, during the meeting on January 24th, 2022, a notice to appear establishing of hearing, establishment of hearing came before the city council, and a councillor indicated that they needed to abstain from voting. The council president acknowledged that the councillor had recused herself. The city clerk requested a statement as to the basis of the recusal. The councillor stated that the abstention was due to a potential conflict of interest. The council voted, and the clerk recorded the vote as 801. Therefore, the prior practice is clear. Respectfully, the prior practice of the council should not be changed in the light of a novel interpretation of Rule 18. I'm unaware of any example in which the entire body entertained a motion as to whether or not to allow a member to excuse themselves because of a conflict, nor would the practice of entertaining a motion and debating another's conflict based on an inquiry serve the interests of the council or the city. This is particularly true when the measure being voted upon does not implicate rules where a particular number of votes are required or a certain proportion of the votes of the members elected. Furthermore, this prior practice is in the best, is the best practice, as it is important that we encourage public officials to excuse themselves from conflicting situations and the performance of the public duty. Requiring city councilors to disclose details of a conflict of interest parentheses to political opponents end parentheses could have a chilling effect on requests or abstentions. Furthermore, the rule provides no support that additional information must be supplied once the member has identified they have a conflict, nor does it contemplate or require a detailed statement or a hearing on the same. There is ample support in the prior practice of the Leominster City Council that the member can state his reason by declaring a conflict only and then be excused. Assuming a conflict of interest is subject to the approval of the body, Leominster's prior practice will govern how to excuse a member due to conflict. Council has the power to make rules to excuse members from voting. Where a general statute and a specific statute cannot be reconciled, the general statute must yield to the specific statute. Pereira versus New England, NLG, 364, Mass., 169, 118, 301, New England, 2, 441, in 1973. In this matter, the provision of State Ethics Statute specifically addresses conflicts. Statute provides that a municipal employee, a person performing services for a holding in office, position, employment, or membership in a municipal agency, whether by election, appointment, contract, of hire, or engagement, whether serving with or without compensation on a full, regular, part-time, intermittent, or consultant basis, but excluding elected members of a town meeting and/or members of a charter commission established under Article 89 of the Amendments of the Constitution, Mass. General Lodge, Chapter 268A, Section 1. The statute continues by requiring a municipal employee who participates in such an employee in a particular matter in which is, to his knowledge, he, his immediate family, or partner, or business organization in which he's serving as officer, director, trustee, partner, or employee, or any person or organization with whom he's negotiating or has any arrangements concerning prospective employment, has a financial interest, shall be punished, Mass. General Lodge, Chapter 268A, Section 19. This issue clearly places the obligation to excuse oneself from a conflict of interest. In fact, it could even be said that the State Ethics Statute is also a limitation of the legislative authority of the council. The language quoted in Rule 18 comes from the city charter. The charter specifically provides in Section 3.5, except as otherwise provided by law in this charter, the legislative powers of the city council may be exercised in a manner determined by said council, Leominster, Massachusetts, City Charter, 3.59A. The State Ethics Statute, Mass. General Lodge, Chapter 268A, provides individual obligations on individual councilors, and therefore, the State Ethics Statute provides by law a limitation on the legislative power of city council. Maintaining accurate records is an important charge. The clerk's duty is spelled out clearly in the city charter. Charter requires the city clerk to keep the journal of city council's proceedings. The charter goes on further to explain, in Section 3.5CV, a full, accurate, up-to-date record of the proceedings of the city council shall be kept and shall be available for examination of the public. It shall include a record of each roll call vote. The clerk must record the vote accurately and not in the direction of a council president or even a majority of the council. Abstentions are recorded to the right of the nays and not in the minutes. Leominster's prior practice accommodates all of these concerns, and for this reason, and as it is prior practice of the city of Leominster, it is recommended you urge it to be continued. I hope this correspondence assists in the practice and procedures regarding abstention from voting in the great city of Leominster. Vincent P. Poussetterie II, Esquire. I think it's important to have that information. I think it's kind of sad that I had to pay to have you treat me like everybody else on this council.
Okay, Counsel Frida, thank you very much. Is there any other old business to come before the city council?
You're welcome. It's awful to be so rude. It's amazing to me.
Okay. Anything under the community calendar? Okay, seeing none, I'll have a motion to adjourn. Counsel Badanza, and seconded by Counsel Arndinger, is, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify in usual manner. All those opposed, by a vote of nine to zero, we are adjourned. Thank you very, very much. Have a good night.